Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. It's my pleasure to call the city council meeting to order, and I kindly ask our recording secretary, deputy clerk, Ms. Dawkins, to please take the role.
Bruno?
Bruno here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Ruby here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Meladra?
Here.
Marks?
Marks here.
McGowan?
Jeanie's on.
You're muted.
You're muted, Jean. Jean, you're muted. Here.
I'll text her.
Swanson? No, she put it on, but I couldn't hear her.
Here.
Everybody's present.
Fantastic. We have a full house tonight. We begin our city council meetings with the pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to ask Kiran, a senior at Geneva High School.
Here.
Thank you.
Please lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kiran. There is a sound emanating from Route 31 that I'm not sure what that is, but if it's not disturbing anyone else, we'll just proceed and work on St. Charles attacking. Oh, is that what it is? Ah, good Lord. Item three, folks, new business and public comment. Is there anyone here this evening with any questions, comments on any matter that's on the agenda or any matter whatsoever who wishes to address the council? Now is your time to do so. Very well. Onto the items of business. Item 4A is to proclaim October 25 through the 31st, 2020, as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Geneva, and we have a very special presentation with us or for us this evening. Our friend Kiran from Geneva Community High School, a senior, has some remarks. Welcome. And Kiran, tell us a little bit about yourself, other than you're a senior. We know that.
Okay. I think this is close enough.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
So my name is Kiran McCarthy. I'm a senior at Geneva. I guess I've been playing volleyball for the past six years.
Wow.
And I'm co-president of the Geneva SAD Club.
Now, you play travel as well, volleyball?
Yes.
What's club sport? What a club team, rather?
I'm at Fusion.
Fusion. How goes that?
I'm good.
Yeah?
Yes.
Now, you're a senior, so obviously you're being recruited, I'm assuming.
Um, eh, more or less.
Do you want to play collegiate level?
I'm not really sure yet.
Where are you thinking of going to school? Is it too early?
Um, I'm applying to some Colorado schools and some Arizona schools, but I'm not really sure yet.
Getting the heck out of Dodge, huh?
Yes.
Any idea what you want to study yet?
Um, I'm thinking about chemistry or chemical engineering.
Do you know that today is National Chemistry Day?
Oh, no, I wasn't aware.
It is?
Oh, nice.
Isn't that amazing?
Yeah.
What's your favorite inert gas?
Wouldn't... Don't have a favorite. I love all of them equally.
Yeah. How many periodic elements are there now, do you know?
There's a lot.
There's a lot. Well, you're going to skate right through that chemistry stuff.
Yeah, right?
I'm telling you, the floor is yours.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Like I said, my name is Kiran McCarthy, and I would like to thank you all for allowing me this precious time of year meeting to recognize the importance of Red Ribbon Week. The entire nation celebrates this week each year to send a message to the community about taking responsibility for your health and making mature decisions regarding substance abuse. The Red Ribbon Committee aims to help children and teens build strong assets to stay on the right track and away from substances. We know that there is a lot of pressure on teens to try to fit in with different crowds, and a lot of that pressure is placed on them by their own perceptions of what normal behavior looks like. The Red Ribbon Committee and the SAD Club try to send a different message to teens to let them know what the real norm is, that most teens are not out there using drugs on the weekends. Most teens spend their time with their families and friends in a safe way and act as a positive role model for the younger children in their community. The COVID pandemic has had a detrimental impact on individuals with regards to drug addiction. More incidents of drug abuse have been reported as people feel afraid, isolated, and financially stressed. Now, more than ever, we need to help support each other and promote strength in asking for help for those with addiction problems. We also need to promote asset building in teens to help prevent experimenting and social drug use. Statistics show that teens that are more involved in their community and have a sense of belonging and stability are less likely to engage in risky behaviors. In trying to make an impactful campaign with our students, we highlight the six principles that help facilitate a drug-free lifestyle. These principles are finding a natural high that is your passion, surrounding yourself with positive peer influences, finding a positive mentor to encourage you, having a firm belief in your talents and abilities, setting goals for your future, and building resilience to help you get through challenges in life. To me, Red Ribbon Week means remembering those that I have lost to drug abuse, but it also serves as a reminder to check on my loved ones often and to find happiness in myself, not in drugs and alcohol. This year's theme is be happy, be brave, be drug-free. At the high school level, we are helping students build assets where they give back to their community through our annual food drive. We are joining the student council in the virtual 5K during Red Ribbon Week to raise funds for COVID relief. We are also working with our GTV students to promote healthy decision-making and being brave in standing up to peer pressure. Please take a moment to talk about healthy decision-making within your own families as well as in the community. Again, thank you for your time and attention to this important celebration.
Thank you, Kiran, very much. I've got a quick question for you. You referenced the phrase "natural high." What is your natural high?
Um, personally, mine would have to be playing volleyball and just working out in general. I also genuinely enjoy schoolwork, and it makes me feel like I'm getting things done.
Hold on. Are all your teachers are watching? Is this called brownie points? What's going on here?
I hope so. But yeah, it gives me a sense of accomplishment, so I'd say that.
That's pretty cool. Now, what position are you?
I'm a middle.
You're a middle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Are you an Instagram follower?
Um, not really.
There was an Instagram photo the other day of, I think it was 318 grams, and one of the great volleyball players of Geneva High School, Lauren Wasinski, was featured in that.
Yeah, she's one of our new coaches.
Yeah, isn't she incredible? She's a real talent. She's a wonderful person, so.
Yeah.
Be happy and be brave. What's the most challenging part about... Or I should... Let me rephrase it. Define being brave in light of everything going on these days and the challenges you face as a student with peer pressure, et cetera.
I feel like being brave to me really means, like you said, resisting peer pressure because nowadays it feels like everyone is doing these things, and it starts to feel isolating if you don't partake in it. So I guess the biggest part of that would just be trying to stay away from it, even though it might not be the easiest decision.
Is the pressure greater now because of the pandemic, or has it always been great and it's just more pronounced?
I would say that, at least from my perspective, it's always been great and it's just more pronounced now since...
Is that right?
There's not as much, like, school is only half in person, like, I feel like kids have less to do now, so they're turning to other things.
So the idle time sometimes becomes a challenge?
Yes.
Is that right? And obviously, you and your friends, I'm certain, talk about these challenges. Is there a time when others come to your group of friends and say, hey, listen, I don't want to hang out with those, or I don't want to do what they're doing? How can I free myself from that?
Um, rarely, but if it does happen, it's just kind of a conversation of what you can do to make yourself feel better, like I said, like the natural high, instead of partaking in destructive activities.
Would you object if I opened up to the council? Questions or comments for you?
No.
Anyone from the dais? Any questions or comments? Alderman Kilburg?
I don't know how many years we've had Red Ribbon Week here in Geneva, but I'm sure it's over 25 years that we've been observing Red Ribbon Week in the community. And as we... As we address Red Ribbon Week for 2020, I think it would be inappropriate if we didn't recognize someone that dedicated her leadership and her service to the promotion of good health in our community, and that'd be Becky Furnish. Becky was involved with your group for years, and unfortunately, she passed away this past summer, and she was a strong spokesperson for the objectives of what we gather here tonight to recognize and proclaim in Geneva. And again, as a community, I certainly want to recognize that service again, and to her family and everything that she brought to a healthy community. Thank you.
Well said. Anyone else? Alderman Burkhardt?
Well, Dean said what I wanted to say, but more eloquently. Becky Furnish has been on my mind a lot. We just... She was my daughter's first-grade teacher, and we just came across a video of her leading Hannah's Halloween parade around Williamsburg. And so I was already thinking of her, and then having the Red Ribbon talk tonight, Becky is on my mind, and I think it reminds all of us that all the actions we do in this life have ripples and that certainly her leadership and wonderful nature and accomplishments aren't forgotten. So... But I did want to ask our student here, I mean, I do have a new middle schooler, you know, how early is too early to start talking about alcohol and drug abuse? And when did it come on your radar that this was something that you might want to avoid or try to, you know, live kind of your... A clean life in high school?
Well, I would have to say that it's never too early to start talking about it. I know nowadays, kids start pretty early. I've heard some kids starting using in middle school, like, even as early as sixth grade, so I would say have that talk as soon as possible. And it really came on my radar in middle school, I would say, just because in my family, I've had some family members with addiction issues, and I've lost some people, and it was during the middle school time where I went through all that, so I was more aware than I think the average middle schooler. But also, you just start to see your friends doing it, people from other schools doing it, so I would say, yeah, it's not too early to start now, and middle school is probably about the time it begins.
Thanks for being there tonight.
Yeah.
Anyone joining us remotely? Any questions or comments for our guest? Kiran, what number do you wear in volleyball?
It changes.
Oh, it does? You don't get to keep it? You don't like... If you had your choice, what number?
Probably eight.
Number eight. Is that a special number for you?
I just like it.
That's what I got on my ACT, was an eight. Unbelievable. After two tries. You have some guests with you this evening as well. Would you like to introduce those guests?
Oh, yes. So that is Mr. Meister.
Of course.
She is my club sponsor. And then that is my mom, Tanya McCarthy.
Okay, well, come on... Mom, come on up.
She wasn't expecting that.
I did not expect that.
No, it's good. Obviously, you're proud of Kiran.
Very proud, yes.
I'm not certain how to phrase the question, but it's tough out there.
Yes.
You are obvious... Kiran, you're looked up to by students as not just an athlete, but also a student, someone that people trust. What's that like for a mom to know that your daughter's in such a leadership role and that sometimes that role is... It's tough to handle?
Yeah. Ever since she was born, she's had her own mind. She's been fiercely independent, very hardworking, very self-directed and motivated. During the middle school years, I started to get a little bit nervous, but she stayed that course. So I've been really lucky. I've been very blessed, and I'm very, very proud of her. She's an amazing, amazing young woman, and she's going to be 18 in January. My heart's breaking. I can't believe how fast it's gone by, but I'm very, very proud of her. She's really... Just kind of sticks to her guns.
Fantastic.
She's not swayed easily.
That's good. And at what age did Kiran exceed you in height?
Um, what was that?
I don't know.
Seventh grade?
Really? Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
I think it was seventh grade, yeah.
No kidding. Well, we're very proud of you. If you would permit me, I have a proclamation I'd love to present to you.
Yep.
Is that be okay?
Yes.
Ms. Dawkins is going to snap a photo. If you don't object, may I tweet that out?
No, that's okay. That's a lot more than I have.
Heels in there, they make me look small. Come on up here. We're going to do this probably in two... Here, you're taller than I am. Do this, and we'll know we're six feet older. Is that them?
Yeah, he said, "Thank you."
Kiran, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you for your time, everybody. Thank you.
Usually, after presenting, you stay here all night? But tonight, go ahead and sneak out. Next, folks, we have our friend Chuck Miles, who's here tonight to talk to us about and help us proclaim October 24th, 2020, as World Polio Day. Mr. Miles, how are you?
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you, even the people out there virtually. You know, I was thinking, a year ago, I was here, I think this is the third year in a row that we've done World Polio Day in Geneva, and we had about five or six kids from the DECA program here, and they painted everybody's pinky-purple, and we had a little fundraiser at the high school, and they got money off of you. And hearing a student talk just reminds me how lucky we are in Geneva with the education program we have, led by, you know, the memory of Becky Furnish for all of us, whose kids had her, but what great kids we have in Geneva and how dedicated they are to their community. So I want to wish them well on Red Ribbon Week. Before I get started, I wanted to thank council, staff, Stephanie, everybody that you work with, and Mayor Burns for your leadership on COVID. This is a tough time, but I can't tell you the time I've been prouder to live in Geneva. I feel safe in Geneva. I don't feel so... Not necessarily so safe walking around some other towns, and they probably don't want me in Batavia anyway, so that's probably okay. But I know... And I thank the chamber for all the great work they've done. I know Mayor Burns, I've been on some calls with the chamber with you, and really a great working relationship between the city and the chamber that's going on. So I just wanted to thank you for that. And we'll tell you, it's a little strange to be here talking about polio. And I thought long and hard about whether we should go ahead with the world... With the proclamation for World Polio Day, as did the Rotary Club. So I'm very big on supporting local charities, as all of you know, and local service organizations. So I'm going to ask you, at the end of this, to donate some money to Polio. But before I do that, I wanted to give you some other places locally that could also use your funds. So AID, the Association for Individual Development, of which, in transparency, I'm a board member; Mutual Ground, Tri-City Family Services, Northern Illinois Food Bank, and Chapel Street Church Food Pantry. Chapel Street Church Food Pantry, the Rotary Club of Geneva donated $1,000 early on in this, and our district came through with a matching grant for another thousand. So anything you could do to help any of those charities locally is great. So let me give you a little bit on Polio and where we're at. I do have some good news. Earlier this year, the whole continent of Africa was determined to be polio-free. So that's quite a... It's been a long journey here. Rotary began its partnership with people like the World Health Organization, CDC, UNICEF, and there's one other one, if I look at my notes. And then just recently, or more recently, has been the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, which has been very helpful in the funding part of this. When that Global Polio Eradication Initiative was started in 1988, there were 350,000 cases of polio in 125 countries every year. Today, polio cases have been reduced by 99.9%. There's only two countries left reporting wild polio, and that is Afghanistan and Pakistan. Because of the efforts of Rotary and its partners, nearly 19 million people who would otherwise have been paralyzed are walking, and more than 1.5 million people are alive who otherwise would have died. The interesting part, and why I decided to bring this forward, and the club did, is the work that Rotary has done, along with these other organizations around the world, will be instrumental in defeating COVID around the world. Rotary, as well as these other organizations, put in the infrastructure to be able to, anywhere in the world, deliver vaccines. That included all the logistics, and you read about a lot of the vaccines, now we're going to need super cold temperatures. That was all put in place because of the polio vaccine. So a lot of that stuff is in place. Rotary had stopped the polio vaccines for a couple months during COVID, have now started it back up. Along with the polio vaccines, Rotary also checks, or these organizations also check for measles outbreaks and provide vaccines for that, as well as vitamin deficiencies and other types of medical coverage. The other interesting part is the monitoring, and I've seen this, it's not the most pleasant thing to talk about, but one of the ways they monitor is with wastewater. And they could tell through wastewater whether there's an outbreak. And I've seen, a few months ago, there were some reports in colleges using the same type of approach to find out if there were outbreaks in any of their dormitories. So all that's in place really is a result of a lot of the work that Rotary and these other organizations have done. The other part of this that's so important is, and I think I made this comment the last two years, we're only an airplane away from a pandemic. I didn't... I wish I hadn't said that, so it's all my fault. But if you think about it, how close we are to something like polio coming back, there's only been one, or the threat of that. There's only been one illness has been eradicated, that's smallpox. So we're very close on polio, and we can't give up. The reason is, if the eradication effort stopped today, within 10 years, polio would paralyze as many as 200,000 children every year. Polio-free world would be a healthier world for children everywhere. So the global effort to eradicate polio has already saved more than $27 billion in healthcare costs since 1988, expects to save $14 billion more by 2050. So one of the things I'm going to ask is, if you feel so inclined, tonight or some other time, go to npoleo.org, and you can donate. The good part of donating to N-Poleo, after you've donated to local charities, is every dollar given there through Rotary, through npoleo.org, will be matched two-for-one by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. So your dollar becomes three. That buys six vaccines. So it's a pretty great way to make use of your money. The Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation have been great in providing the funding, and you've seen, a lot of you who followed all this with COVID have seen Bill Gates and Melinda talk on TV about the way this works, and we do... We do have a responsibility to take care of those, not only in our community, less fortunate than us, but also around the world. So again, it's npoleo.org. Appreciate any support you can give to that. Some fascinating information out there. So with that, I'll see if there's any questions. And I don't have my favorite inert gas.
No. Any questions or comments for Mr. Miles regarding the good work he and the Rotary Club are doing? Anyone remotely? Anyone joining us in the council chamber? Alderman Kilburg?
Yeah. Just as we deal with COVID, I think it's interesting to draw some comparisons to the polio and Jonas Salk and his leadership through science...
Right.
...as related to the developing of the vaccine that ultimately helped accomplish what you've outlined as far as almost nearly eradicating it. Salk, and I did a quick Google, so this isn't off the top of my head, but he first introduced the vaccine in 1950, and it was not released to the public until 1955. And in the first year in 1950, there were like 58,000 cases in the United States with 3,000 deaths from it. So in comparison to COVID, I think there's some interesting parallels to be drawn. First, how much science has advanced, and although we don't have a vaccine yet for COVID, it is a process that needs to play out. And actually, when COVID, or when the first polio vaccine was introduced in the Western United States, there were 2,000... 200,000 people that were vaccinated, and that they ended up with deaths as a result of it because they hadn't perfected it.
Right.
And it went back to the drawing board, and then there was more work that was done.
Right.
But obviously, we've got a... We've got a real challenge as it relates to COVID, and hopefully, our science community can advance a treatment for COVID in much the same way, and hopefully, a lot quicker than what took place with polio.
Yeah. Well, and I think that's the other... Thanks, Dean, but I think the other interesting part of what Dean said there is just the amount of time it takes, you know, to eradicate something like this. I think, you know, if you had told us all, I think I was in one of the last meetings here in March, we had a planning commission meeting or something, and I was here with a bunch of people, and the next day, I think the world all came to an end. I think if anybody told us at that point, we'd be wearing masks like this tonight and probably into, well into next year, none of us would have believed it. But there is, and there is a lot of... There's an interesting book, and I don't remember the name of it, but it's written by Philip Roth, the guy who wrote Goodbye Columbus, about the polio outbreak. It's really fascinating because it's... In a lot of ways, it's very similar to what you see with the polio outbreak with COVID, is when a neighborhood would... And it was... It all takes place in New York, but a neighborhood where somebody gets affected with polio, and everybody kind of runs and scatters, and because they don't quite know what they're dealing with, just like this. Yeah, so there are... There's a lot of similarities there, and that's why I think, you know, we... Part of the reason we came, we decided to come here tonight was, we can't lose sight of the long term and can't lose all the good work that's been done by Rotary, World Health Organization, CDC, and UNICEF, as well as the Gates Foundation. So thanks, Dean.
Well, certainly, you know, the closing of the pools during the polio outbreak and what have you, just incredible. Am I correct, Dean, since you did the Googling? Did Dr. Salk give what he created away free replication?
That is correct, Mayor.
That's what I thought, yes. Imagine that. Yeah.
I should have had that in high school. That is correct.
I would have done better in chemistry.
Yep.
Yeah, it's amazing, so. And despite the work being done seems to be a million miles away, it is indeed our neighbors, so thank you. Anyone else? For Mr. Miles. We have a proclamation. Is there a motion to so approve and proclaim October 24th as World Polio Day in the City of Geneva? Offered by Alderman Swanson. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Alderman Casarog? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
May I present this to you, sir?
You certainly may.
It just dawned on me, I forgot to take the motion for the last one.
Thank you, everybody.
You'd like your best, Chuck.
Thank you.
He's hardware.
He's hardware.
Ten bucks a mask, man. Life is good.
You don't have a smart belt.
And what do you see? Your eyes are... We can see your eyes in the poststation.
Kiran, would you feel more comfortable? I just asked Stephanie. It's up to you guys. Could I have a motion and a second on the Red Ribbon as well, just to cover all bases? My apologies. Alderman Kilburg made the motion?
Second.
Alderman Burkhardt made the second. All in favor? Please say aye.
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 My apologies for that oversight. We're still on item four, folks. Public hearing, special items and presentations. We're still on item four, folks, public hearing, special items and presentations. Let's say, and let's give a big Geneva welcome to our new city planner, Mr. Chayton True. Chayton, come on up. Your first day was October 5th. Two weeks now, huh?
That is correct. Yes.
Chayton True, is Chayton a family name?
It's, it's not. My parents actually found it in a baby book, so.
No kidding? That's a cool name.
Yeah, it means Falcon in the Lakota tribe, so just some.
Oh, does it really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yep, they turned a page, pointed, and I guess that's how it happened, so.
Well, that's cool. You know what the word Kevin means in Gaelic?
Tell me.
Mediorcer.
Okay.
Now, check this out, folks, born and raised in Kirksville, Missouri.
Yes, sir.
You know, my brother taught in Kirksville, Missouri for a few years.
Really?
Unbelievable.
At one of the universities?
No, at the, thank you for laughing. You've never met my brother, have you?
Oh.
He's in prison now, so it's, I have a sad story. No, at high school.
I'm sorry?
At the high school.
Oh, okay.
We have a lot of students from Geneva, and I know Kilburg knows this, that went to Truman State University.
Yeah.
Yeah, it used to be Northwest Missouri State, now Truman State University. We had a couple of young ladies play volleyball there.
Yeah.
I think the Ward Girls, I think it was the Ward Girls that played there.
Kirksville takes a lot of pride in their higher education institution, so.
And of course, you and I were talking about the osteopaths before the meeting began, the home of AT Still University.
Yes, Kirksville is actually the birthplace of osteopathic medicine.
Very good. Did everybody know that? Yeah. Now, you believe in osteopathic medicine, I trust?
Sure. I haven't really, I dabbled in it too much.
Thanks for that endorsement, Jayden, that's going to go, you're standing up straight, so that helps. Attended the University of Missouri, Kansas City, and graduated with a degree in urban planning and design.
Yes, yep.
Dean, you might like this. After initially working in community development in Iowa, where in Iowa?
Atumwa. So, I lived in Bloomfield, which is just south of Atumwa, southeast.
And who is from Atumwa, Iowa?
Tom Arnold, right?
Well, no, no, somebody killed him.
Radar O'Reilly.
Ah, yeah.
Oh, God, that's right, I saw that documentary. You know who?
Radar O'Reilly.
Radar O'Reilly.
The other famous guy besides Tom Arnold.
The other famous guy, yeah. Isn't that something? And what show was Radar on?
Mash.
Very good.
Yeah.
Very good.
So, I did take a little information, so.
That's good living.
From Iowa.
So, you left Atumwa, for obvious reasons, and you were able to fill the first city planner position in your hometown of Kirksville.
Yeah, so, born and raised in Kirksville, and then, as you mentioned, yeah, went to Kansas City for a while to study urban planning and design, and then an opportunity opened up in Kirksville, and so I was able to fill the, City of Kirksville's first city planner position. So, it was very rewarding to, you know, go to school and then come back and be able to serve my hometown and, you know, try to make it better.
Was there a lot of pressure there as well? I mean, you knew everybody, you knew all the stuff that did or did not happen, and now you're in charge of either enhancing, improving, changing?
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, I had a lot of credit, credibility, because, you know, I would still call, like Rotary Park, Swimming Pool Park, it just, you know, I had a lot of contacts with the community, so.
That's really cool.
Yeah.
Wow. For what it's worth, you're a fan of the Kansas City, is it Chiefs?
Yes.
Chiefs?
Yes. I believe that is correct.
So, are you a season ticket holder?
No, not, I don't know how that could work out, but maybe when they come to Soldier Field, I could do that.
And your quarterback makes, what, 17 billion a year or something like that?
Oh, yeah, around there somewhere.
He's the highest-paid athlete ever.
Yeah, yeah. Don't you think he deserves it?
Is that a question?
Yeah.
What does he make it, is like 100 million?
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's just obscene, isn't it?
Yeah, a lot of money.
Unbelievable. Okay, folks, brace yourself on this one. This is, these are your words, Chayton. Ready? I storm chased throughout the Midwest during the spring and early summer.
Yep. I guess I was a kid in the 90s, you know, and so Twister came out, and it was, I don't know, I guess I just watched the movie and.
You got all the apparati in your house, and you hear it coming, and you think, I'm out, I'm going?
Something like that.
Do others join you, I assume?
Yeah, so usually I try to find somebody else to come with me, just so that, like, I'm the one driving.
Smart.
And then they're the ones, you know, operating the laptop, so we know exactly where things are, where we need to be, where we should be in relation to the storm, so. But yeah, actually, this past March, I was around Galesburg, and.
Oh, you were, wow.
Yeah, three separate storms, so it was, it was a pretty intense day, but yeah, it's a little hobby of mine, I guess.
Where does the data, where do you send the data you collect, or is that just simply a hobby?
So, it's just simply a hobby.
It is.
It's mainly just, so, the way that radars work is it's, they send out beams at a certain.
Jayden, we know how they work. Look at us, we're brilliant.
Well, like, long story short, I guess, storm chasers are like the first ones there that usually report if there actually is a tornado, so, you know, it's kind of, you know, that's an important factor when, you know, issuing warnings and trying to, you know, get people out of harm's way.
Have you ever been in harm's way?
Uh, maybe twice, but got to know where to be at, so.
So, just, just throwing this out there, so forgive me if this is tangential, but it's 2:30 on a Thursday, you're putting together plans for a new redevelopment of the city. Are we going to have to, like, see you run from the building out west or something?
No, planning Geneva comes first, so. It's a weekend hobby, I guess I should have added that.
Oh, it's a weekend hobby, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Did you know that, Mr. DeGroot, prior to bringing this gentleman on?
I think he came up in the second interview.
Did he really? Wow. And you have a two-year-old dash hound named Molly.
I do, yep, she's, she'll be coming to join me sometime soon, but just getting settled down right now, and then she'll be, she'll be coming up.
May I ask where the name Molly comes from?
The unsinkable Molly Brown from the Titanic.
Did you see the article in the paper the other day, they're trying to retrieve the radio from the Titanic?
Really? I did not see that, no.
Yet the debate is that they don't want to disturb any of the bodies that are there out of respect, what have you, so it's quite the, have you been to the museum yet?
I haven't.
Are you a big Titanic fan?
Uh, here and there.
Okay, we'll, we'll just go on. So, where do you, when do you hope to make the move? Or have you?
I, I, I'm here, yeah.
It's official. You're here, you're not going back on weekends, all that stuff?
Oh, well, I'll, yeah, I'll be visiting back home, usually taking Amtrak, so, yeah, we have a couple.
Really?
Yep, a couple Amtrak lines that go back, back home. So, it's a quick weekend trip.
Well, that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
You just grab it out of the city and boom.
Yeah, or Naperville, yeah, or La Grange.
Well, that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Wow. What piqued your interest in urban planning as a young man?
Um, honestly, it was probably SimCity, I guess. I don't know if anybody's familiar with the computer game.
Oh, my God, you had that game?
But yeah, just like you could, you know, it's a simulation game, and you could just build your own cities and be as creative as you can, and I think in middle school, that really piqued my interest, and then from there, I was like, oh, I could, I could do this as a profession, so.
Is that, is that game still around?
Uh, yeah, I think so. It's become a lot more sophisticated, but yeah, it's still around. I hope people are still using it. I mean, it turned me into an urban planner, so I hope I can do that for other, you know.
Do you receive compensation for your endorsement of that game?
Uh, I hope so, if they're listening.
If anybody listens. What else do we know about you, Chayton?
Um, I am really excited to be here. I have family from the area, so, you know, we come up to visit, usually on spring break, when I was growing up, you know, where else would you want to go on spring break besides Chicago in March, so. But I just, you know, I always loved the area, and, you know, it was, I grew up in Kirksville, as I mentioned, I was working there, and I think it was just time to start a new chapter, and, you know, we did a lot of great work in Kirksville, and so I was ready to make the next move. And I'm glad I found Geneva, because I think we have a lot of great things going on in our community.
Yeah, it's very exciting. And it's worth noting, I don't know if Mr. DeGroot shared this with you or not, but there were actually just a total of two applicants, so we're excited to have you.
Works for me.
The other, the other person was a Packers fan, so we thought.
Oh.
Who won the first Super Bowl?
The Chiefs, right, yeah.
Who did they play?
Um.
Do you know, Bob?
I think it's the Packers.
Very good, yeah, exactly. I kind of gave that answer away, man.
I know, you said it right up for me, and I failed.
Questions or comments for Mr. True, or anything from any one of the council, either remotely or here? Alderman Bruno?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and welcome aboard, Chayton.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you. I was, as you were speaking, one of the virtues of being virtual, I'm Googling pictures of Kirksville. There's, it's not, it seems like the downtown is not dissimilar than from, from Geneva in some respects. The, are there, do you have any historic preservation departments or ordinances in that, in that town?
Yes, we do have a historic preservation commission. They were started in 2008, but actually, over the past couple of years, we started completing some historic surveys in our more established portions of town, so that's just going to help Kirksville can figure out exactly what next steps they need to do for historic preservation in some of those neighborhoods around the downtown. So, they've really taken some big steps over the past couple of years in focusing on historic preservation.
Oh, good. We look forward to working with you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And just so we square things away, when, when we see you out and about, you prefer Chayton, not, there's no abbreviation to that name?
Nope, just Chayton.
Chayton it is, okay. Well, welcome aboard, sir, we're delighted to have you.
Yes, I'm glad to be here, thank you.
Thank you very much. And David, are dogs allowed in the building during working hours?
Sure. Yeah.
You have to sign them.
Yes, I think you're right. Well said. Number five, folks, amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this evening? From anyone? Item six is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this city council, and those items that are marked with an asterisk can be considered enacted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
Bruno's motion.
Alderman Swanson makes the motion to approve the consent agenda, and Alderman Bruno makes that second. Last chance for questions or comments. Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The consent agenda, or the omnibus agenda, passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We jump to item 11, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our deputy clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $3,806,315.28.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read, the individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes a motion to pay the bills as presented. These bills are also available on the city's website and in the council members' packets. Is there a second to that motion offered? Alderman Burghart makes the second to that motion. Any questions, any comments regarding the bills? Ms. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Item 11, the municipal bills for payment, has been adopted with a vote of 10 in the affirmative, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We jump to item 13, folks. Item 13A in particular is Consider Resolution Number 2020-83, approving a preliminary and final plat approval for the Traxler subdivision. Our guests this evening are Eric and, I believe it's Valier Traxler. Did I pronounce that?
No, it's Valerie.
It's Valerie, it's a typo.
Oh, it is a typo. Forgive me, Valerie.
It's okay.
I apologize. Was this your doing, Chayton? No, he's gone already. What is this? Valerie, forgive me.
It's okay.
Is there a motion, ladies and gentlemen?
No.
Alderman Burghart makes the motion to approve, seconded by Alderman Caven. Mr. DeGroot, is there any information you'd like to present that was not included in the packet, or anything you'd like to enhance that was?
Sure.
Okay.
It's okay.
Do you want me to turn to you first?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
You know.
I was not ready, so, okay.
Sorry, David.
Sorry. So, this subdivision is a two-lot subdivision on the terminus of South 8th Street. It's a city right-of-way right now, but there's, there's currently a private driveway serving one home there. As such, the applicant is requesting several variations and exceptions from the subdivision regulations to kind of align these two lots and the improvements for these lots with the existing conditions in the area. So, no sidewalks, not a, not a true 30-foot-wide public street, but has agreed to provide an 18-foot-wide driveway that would be able to accommodate emergency vehicles. It was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 8th with some conditions. Two of those conditions have already been satisfied, they requested some modifications to the tree preservation plan and landscape plan, those have been addressed. But since, since that time, the neighboring property to the north has raised some issues regarding the placement of some of the proposed parkway trees, and through some discussions with the applicant today, they've agreed to relocate two of those parkway trees along the west property line of the property to the north to accommodate some of those concerns. So, that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell, but I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Questions or comments for Director DeGroot, Alderman Swanson, Alderman Maladra?
Thank you, Mayor. On the tree preservation issue, there are going to be some mature trees that are being taken down, is that correct?
That's correct.
And they're not only on the subject property, but they're on the neighboring properties.
In the, in the right-of-way.
In, in the right-of-way, but, but they do impact the, the neighbors to the north.
Right, there, I believe there's a cluster of like three trees to the north that are being removed on, on the east side of the right-of-way, and then one on the, on the west side.
So, I, I appreciate the, uh, the change to plant new trees to the north. I think, uh, as a goodwill, I would, uh, propose adding the condition that we replace two trees on the east side of Eighth Street to the north, and one tree on the west side, uh, where to replace the trees that are coming down. So I'd like to, uh, propose that as an additional condition. Do I need to make that a formal amendment?
Let me clarify, e, on the east side of Eighth Street, two trees?
Two trees in the north, the north property, which I believe is, uh, uh, one, the address is, uh, one, um...
It's one north Crawford.
Yes, and then to the west, I believe one tree is coming down. I would like to see one tree replaced on that side, so that it's, uh, even, if you will. Where the trees are coming out, they're being replaced.
City, Mr. City Attorney, you prefer this in the form of a...
It needs to be in a motion to amend as a condition.
As a condition. Got it, okay. So, conditions and motions are separate things, so is that a motion, sir?
I, I would like to make that motion.
Okay. Motion is accepted as stated. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Maladra. The discussion continues, ladies and gentlemen, on the motion. Alderman Maladra?
Uh, no comment on the motion exactly. I just think that it's sort of, uh, an obvious decision, you know, what you've removed. Uh, these are, these are mature trees that people have been taking care of for years, if not decades. I think that it should be replaced like-for-like, if possible.
On the motion, anyone else? Alderman Bruno has his hand up. I believe Alderman Kassarog?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Director DeGroot, is there, uh, any, uh, would this motion impose any complexities or make, uh, this division somehow untenable, not, not knowing exactly how that's laid out, having only heard this just now?
Um, I, we can review the plan, and, and as long as we're not locking down at a very specific location, I'm sure we can accommodate the request. Um, obviously, trees are being removed because they're in the way of either new roadway or new utility lines, so we'll have to make sure that we have proper spacing from those improvements. Um, but I'm sure we can find, identify a location to, to plant these trees on either side of the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Alderman Kassarog?
I was just wondering, is there, um, I believe from my experience in PCC, didn't sometimes people make donations to our tree fund in lieu of planting trees?
In lieu of planting trees? Yes, that's, that's occurred.
And so, I don't know if we wanna give them that option, or maybe the property owners that you're proposing them on, I don't disagree with their proposal at all, but maybe they would prefer to take care of it themselves, and then the applicants could make a donation in lieu of building those, or, uh, planting those trees.
The conversations I've had with the neighbors, what they would, they would prefer the trees be planted, that we did not discuss. Having them do it on their own. Okay.
That was my only comment. Thank you.
Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. Um, David, I, I don't know if this is possible or not, but, um, you know, a, a new tree doesn't compare to a mature, established tree, even if they do replace it. Um, I'm specifically asking about the three trees that need to be removed that are in the right-of-way. Is, is there a chance that the project could be modified so that those three trees could remain?
Uh, I, I don't believe so. I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to that. I, I don't know that they can be, because that, that, they are located right where the new water main is coming through, um, so I don't believe they could remain and be, be protected.
So the, the water main isn't negotiable where that goes?
Uh, well, to, to have it within the right-of-way, um, I don't think there was room to, to move it around these trees and, and still be able to protect the trees.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Alderman McGowan, excuse me.
Thank you. Okay. My computer is horrible, so I apologize for my technical difficulties earlier, but can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Is it clear? Okay, 'cause I don't wanna talk if it's like garbled, so please tell me. Um, so David, in regard to the trees that would be coming down, would there be the same, would the applicant be paying the same fee, um, based on the assessment of those trees?
The applicant's not, not paying a fee. They, they are planting the required, um, amount of replacement trees within the right-of-way. So, uh, with, with the subdivision and the tree preservation plan, um, we identify each tree, its species, its size, condition, and those trees are rated, and if they're rated Class A or Class B trees, then we have certain replacement requirements. Um, so that, that's, that's what's being proposed here, is that they're addressing that with the six new parkway trees.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry if I missed this information earlier, but what, what is the total cost that the applicant would be paying for the removal of the trees? Without talking about replacing any parkway trees, just what is the total that they would be paying to the city to remove the trees?
There, there is no...
For this project?
There is no fee to remove those trees.
Oh, okay, so, getting back to what you just said earlier, that the trees would be assessed, but not in this case?
I guess...
The trees would be assessed for like a monetary value, uh, before being chopped down, but not, but not in this case?
Well, I guess what I meant when I said assess, assess for their condition. So we're, again, we're looking at species, size, condition, and then they're given a rating, and with a, with a subdivision and a tree preservation plan, your planting requirements are based off of the rating of those trees. And if it's a...
And so...
Go ahead.
Oh, no, sorry, what were you saying?
I was gonna say, for, for example, for like a Class A tree, um, if, if it was a 30-inch caliper tree, you would have to replace it with, um, 60 inches of replacement trees.
Okay, so there is no money to be exchanged in this case? It, it's just gonna come down to, like, planting new trees, and then is it, there's a monetary option?
There, there would be a monetary option if they weren't able to plant trees within the parkway.
Oh, I see. What I'm getting at, yeah.
In lieu of option?
I just wanna make sure that, and I, I like Alderman Swanson's, um, proposal or amendments, or whatever it's called. I'm in favor of that, as long as we're not missing out on like tens of thousands of dollars that would potentially go into the city's tree fund, um, but just, just by allowing the residents to plant new parkway trees, which are, which are obviously gonna be very small compared to the ones that are being, that would be taken down. So that was the only thing I was, I was wondering. But it doesn't sound like that's the case.
No, it's not.
Like, the city won't, won't be at a disadvantage or missing out on a lot of funding for our tree fund, um, by just allowing the residents to, or just planting the parkway, uh, parkway trees in different locations.
Right, that's, that is not the case.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry if some of that information was abbreviated, but thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the initial proposal, or the agenda item here, the homeowners or the people that own the property, were already meeting the specifications of whatever the requirements were for planting new trees. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. And what you're proposing, or the, the amendment, is you're asking for three additional trees in addition to what they were already planning to do, or what the initial, what the initial agenda item is. Is that, I just wanna make sure that I have it correct.
I'm moving two trees, and I'm asking for one additional tree.
Okay, so it's a...
The, the plan itself had three trees on both new properties and no trees on the properties that had trees removed. Subsequent to this meeting, it was agreed by the, um, applicants that they would move two of the trees from the subject properties to the north property that they do not own, but is losing three trees, and I'm requesting one additional tree to the west of Eighth Street that where they're taking out another tree.
Okay.
And if it's, if they take one away from, uh, what they're putting in and move it to the other side, that's fine. I'm ju, I just don't want the property owners who are losing trees to be out a tree, is the point of my amendment.
Okay. Is there, what, what is the, what is the monetary cost for adding an additional tree?
It depends, again, on the species and size at the time of planting. Uh, we have minimum planting sizes, that they have to be at least two and a half inches in caliper. Um, so, I mean, that can be, so again, depending on species, 400 bucks and, and on up.
Okay. Can I?
Sure.
Ask, um, either you, sir, or... So, is this gonna be a major deal if you have to add an additional tree?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna invite you to come to the microphone, sir, so, and if you could just share with us your name, and... Thank you very much.
Um...
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, 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 I mean, at this point, if we're, if that's what we're talking about, is one tree, to add an additional tree, we're just, we, we agreed earlier today to move two of the six trees down, uh, in the public right-of-way, closer to the neighbors to the north. Um, if it's one additional tree, yeah, we can do one additional tree on the other side of the street. It's not a big deal.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And that was Eric, I believe. Forgive me. Yep, Eric Traxler. And just, just by way of clarification, the conditions that we originally reviewed in the main motion was via the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then Alderman Swanson amended those conditions to call for the one additional tree and have the other two moved. So that's been seconded, so we're discussing that matter. Anyone else on the issue with regard to the amendment? Alderman McGowan, for a second time, unless somebody else has not yet spoken who wishes to do so? Alderman McGowan, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. And I, I just wanted to add too, in case this hasn't been said already, that really the parkway trees belong to everyone in Geneva, not just the local residents, so even though not too many people drive down Eighth Street, it's kind of tucked away, um, it's very beautiful, it still matters that we maintain our inventory of park trees. So I, that's why I really do, um, think Alderman Swanson is right to bring up this amendment this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else on the amendment? We're gonna be voting on the amendment. Does everyone understand the language thereto? I believe it is to add 217 trees. Everyone's clear on that? The two trees, east side of Eighth Street? One tree, west side of Eighth Street?
To the north of the subject...
North of the property, exactly. Simple majority rules the day. Ms. Dawkins, please take a roll call, or, excuse me, vote.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghardt?
Aye.
The amendment passes in the 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Back to the main motion as amended. Questions or comments regarding it? Alderman Maladra?
I did add, this is for David. Um, so as you know, there are concerns in that area about drainage in general. Um, there were some questions early on in the discussions about this project, about how we would handle that, and so I watched the two plan commission meetings, and I saw explanations about bioswales and stuff like that. My only real question is, um, we're doing a, a sort of general water flow study, uh, in the area. Is this bioswale consistent with what we know we need to be doing moving forward, or is it just meeting current standards?
And it's meeting the current standards for the subdivision for the Kent County Stormwater Ordinance. I don't know how it relates to the overall study that's being done, but it is, we have confirmed that it complies with the Kent County Stormwater Ordinance for this subdivision.
Okay, so in general, like what happened with the greenhouse property development actually improved the drainage? Same situation here?
Right, it would be a ma, a stormwater management where currently it's not managed.
Where there is none.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the main motion as amended? Alderman McGowan? Floor is yours.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't think I'd be so talking at this evening, since I'm attending from home, but anyway, I, I also wanted to add on to something that, um, was just brought up regarding stormwater. It seems like with all of these new developments that we have, they all come with a really good plan for improving the, the drainage of stormwater, but is that only limited to the, the actual property that we're talking about? Um, I've spoken to a couple residents that back up to the creek, that's, um, kind of back there, south of where Eighth Street kind of comes to an end, and they've noted over several decades, um, whenever there's a storm, the amount of water that comes through that creek, it just has increased subtly. So I'm just kind of wondering, um, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see Geneva encourage all new developments to not just divert the water nicely away from the property, but to try to just absorb the water in a way that it won't contribute to flooding for properties that live further downstream, if that makes sense. So it's just something that I wanted to bring up, because again, I, I spoke to a couple concerned resi, Geneva residents about it, um, earlier, like maybe a month ago, and it's not something that I've heard discussed when we talk about stormwater management. So, um, unless I'm mistaken, but, um, things like the bioswales and rain gardens, um, those types of things that help absorb some of the stormwater on site, that it's not causing a flooding problem, but again, to, like, making sure it isn't just causing a flooding problem for someone else further downstream. Thank you.
And David, it's, uh, fair to say that part of the Kent County Stormwater Management Ordinance talks rather, um, specifically regarding absorption rate. So it's not just a matter of moving the water, it's a matter of how that water moves in a timely fashion, as opposed to all at once.
Right, it's not just diverting the water or detaining the water. In this case, it's detaining the water and then releasing it at a slow enough rate where it's not increasing that downflow stream.
Right. The theory, anyways, yeah.
Right.
Exactly. Anyone else on the main motion as amended? The main motion as amended, last chance. Simple majority, ladies and gentlemen, is required to record this as passing. With that, Deputy Clerk Dawkins, please take the roll call.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, nay.
With nine affirmative votes, one nay vote, and zero absent, item 12A is considered adopted. Item 12B, Valerie, my apologies again for the snafu in the name, so... Item 13B, as in boy, consider ordinance number 2020-22, amending Title VII, Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter III, Stopping, Standing, and Parking. Section VII, Daytime Parking Privileges, and adding Chapter IV, Traffic Schedules. Section 14, Schedule IX, Downtown Residential Vehicle Parking Permit Area of the Geneva City Code. Is there a motion?
Bruno still moves.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion. Alderman Burghart makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so, under new business public comment at the last city council meeting, the city council directed professional staff to review the city code as it relates to parking in the downtown area to accommodate residential parking permits. Uh, the discussion was specifically related to a residential property, one in particular. The ordinance presented for consideration addresses downtown parking for all residential units within a specified area, as other property owners have been in contact with the city's professional staff regarding similar requests. Proposed ordinance would provide for the issuance of residential vehicle parking permits to authorize parking on the street where the resident lives without regard to posted maximum parking hour limits. It should be noted that the current residential parking permit program provides for parking where no overnight parking is permitted, but does not provide the ability to park in timed restricted areas. Permits issued are not a guarantee of a parking space and are not transferable, nor shall the immunity granted thereby be applicable to any other restrictions on parking, including but not limited to no parking zones, crosswalks, and driveway entrances. The boundaries for the proposed downtown residential parking permit area would be the same as those outlined in the Geneva City Code, Section 11, 11A-4, except, accepting Third Street from Cheever to Hamilton on both of, both the east and west sides of the street. While the ordinance appears to address the immediate concern, um, there certainly needs to be a broader discussion, and review needs to occur, I think, on all of our parking ordinances. Uh, but we do have this evening Chief Pastorelli with us and Community Development Director DeGroot, or myself, to answer questions. I would just note, we tried to do what we thought was directed by council in the best manner possible, but again, um, kind of, public policy would be to look at addressing the whole issue, as opposed to, to making exceptions for individuals as we go along. So that's what we've tried to do tonight, obviously, it's the council's direction to do what they will with the ordinance as presented.
I recognize, Alderman Bruno?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as I said before at the last, uh, last meeting, uh, with his topic, you know, we're, we're all on board with, uh, residential, um, density downtown. Uh, we, I think everyone recognizes that there's, uh, value in having those, uh, those upstairs residential tenants. Uh, so I appreciate very much the staff, uh, you know, taking a, taking a swing at this. Uh, I'd, uh, I'd offer, I know, uh, uh, Mr. Simon's in the audience, I was wondering if, if the council wouldn't mind to give him a, a chance to, to speak before we, uh, go into our discussion.
I have no objection. Any member of the council have any objection to Mr. Simon delivering a few remarks? Mr. Simon?
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Well, as I read this, it seems to do what I had asked a couple weeks ago, and it goes much, much farther. The much, much farther part is up to you folks, but in terms of what we need for our individual building and what we've been doing for the past 34 years, it does what we had hoped, so thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno, the floor is still yours.
I will cede my time. Thank you.
Anyone else on the matter before us? Alderman Casarog, I know you're next, then anyone after Alderman Casarog? Alderman Burkhardt?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, staff, for doing this, I really appreciate it. I did have one question about the map. And if I'm not mistaken, the new transit-oriented development is within this map, and those apartments will be above a commercial space. So I was concerned that that might be included here, which is certainly not our intention to provide any additional parking for them.
So it is the same map because again, we were trying to, rather than have competing parking restrictions all over the place, we were trying to simplify it, so certainly, but I think if you also look at the other parking restrictions in place, you still would not be able to park on 31, there are still some places, and they would not be allowed to park on Third Street. So it may provide additional parking for these residents, but they would still be required to walk two or three blocks to get that parking. So, but if the council wants to amend the map, they can. I think you'll note, and I think Tara pointed this out, or discovered this as she was reading through the ordinance, the parking ordinance is written such that it's, there are no maps. They are written this street to this street on the east side from first to second. And I literally sat last week trying to map out all of the various restrictions. And it's, it's an exercise in insanity, quite frankly. I had all my colored pens out, I had my map out, I was drawing. So what I was trying to do, what we were trying to accomplish to get what we, what you wanted in the short term was something that was already adopted that could be easily implemented. If you want to change that, again, that is this council's prerogative.
I feel like it's important, given I think, my memory's failing me, but how many units are going to be in that building? And just to avoid headache with people for some reason wanting to apply for permits, even if it wouldn't add any advantage for them, I hear what you're saying, that we should cut out an entire apartment building that's going to be there in a matter of a year. That would be my proposal. So I would say just stop at the train tracks. Third Street to the train tracks. And then wouldn't that take care of it?
We could do train tracks, or you could do South Street.
I'd be fine either way.
I guess I.
I don't know if there's any consensus on that, if not, that's fine too.
Well, if you'd like to make that in the, yeah, you'd like to make the, or offer that in terms of a motion, we could certainly consider it.
Is there any concern from anybody else about that?
If you want to entertain that as a motion.
Okay.
We can see, if you want to put that in.
Sure.
Okay, as a motion, is there a second to the motion to amend as stated by Alderman Casarog, which is to have the map stop heading southbound at?
South Street.
South Street.
I'd second that.
Seconded by Alderman Burkhardt. And Alderman Burkhardt has the floor.
I guess, and I appreciate Brad bringing this up because this is what I'm struggling with. I, I kind of wish, is there a way to be able to push a motion? So I'd like to have a little bit more robust discussion about this, I guess, before we get into the, to vote on the motion. But now that I've seconded it, does that mean I, we got to vote on the motion, basically? Okay.
What's on the floor is the amendment.
Is the amendment, yeah.
And that's the only topic until it's dealt with, and then you can go back to the main motion.
Gotcha, okay. So yeah, I support this because I think that was my issue too, that, you know, and I do totally appreciate, one, how much time city staff worked on this. It makes me feel better to tell Stephanie, say, Stephanie says it's an exercise in insanity because I felt the same as I was trying to make my own map. And I thought, you know, parking, every time it comes up, it is, it is really hard. And I appreciate the chief and his staff. Yeah, I felt like this, the problem we're trying to solve is this kind of historic, some built-in residences along the Third Street corridor that just kind of fell by the wayside as parking restrictions changed. And I feel like Duke and, the Duke and Lee's site is a new, going to be a new build apartment complex that's falling under our current requirements for parking. We even gave them a variance based on being a transit-oriented development. So I feel like, you know, amending this map to stop at South Street makes sense to me.
Anyone else on the amendment? Unless no one else wishes to speak? Alderman Bruno for a second time, unless someone else has not yet spoken into this. Alderman Bruno, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Is, I was, I was thinking the motion was originally stated as the tracks as opposed to South Street. Is there a mechanical or logistical advantage in South Street? Because I think if, if those spaces, let's say the Dodson space, south of South Street, could be redeveloped two-story at some point to have parking above it. Mentally, the tracks seem a better division to me.
Does the motioner wish to comment on that? The founder of the motion?
I don't, I mean, the tracks are the first thing that came on my mind too. I just said south because that's what Stephanie had mentioned, maybe made more sense to her. So I certainly think the tracks make sense, but can I also add on to that a little bit?
Certainly.
Before I, we talk about the motion itself, or I'm still talking about it, but.
Still talking about the amendment.
Yeah, the amendment.
Yep.
I'm wondering, you know, now that I, I mean, the transit-oriented development with the bunch of parking lot, our apartments there came to mind, but now I'm thinking Mill Ray's saying may come in, and they're inside this map. I don't know, can we just, this is probably going to get too big for a discussion, but maybe we just need to shrink it down to Third Street, to the north and south of Third Street, or east and west of Third Street. That would take care of Mr. Simon, and I think that's all we really wanted to do. Not Mr. Simon, but was just kind of keep it to the true, what I think we think of as downtown area currently. And add on later as we see need in a larger discussion. Am I complicating it too much?
I, I don't, I guess I don't know what you mean by the north and south, or the.
Both sides of Third Street.
I don't know what that means, oh, to what point? You need to have, you have to identify what streets. So you either have to identify the specific streets, or you have to identify the area, which is what I was trying to do pictorially as opposed to through words. So I'm not, again, I'm just, I'm, because I don't want to leave here tonight and have everybody think it's something different than what you all agree to.
Alderman Casarog still has the floor.
Would we do Third Street from the tracks, north to whatever street the line is drawn on? One Street, north of Hamilton?
So, so right now, the way the ordinance is written, there is no, this residential permit would not apply to Third Street at all.
Correct.
So what you're looking at is, does it apply from Third Street west to what point? Or Third Street east to what point? From the tracks to State, Hamilton, whatever?
If I could interject.
Sure.
The, I think the confusion might be, these residents might have a Third Street address. They wouldn't get a permit to park on Third Street, but they would have a Third Street address. And while I'm speaking, I don't really have a problem keeping the map as, as shown either.
Alderman Casarog, anything else?
I would say I could keep it simple in my head, and I could, I don't know the rules, you can tell me on modifying my own motion, but maybe as drawn to the train tracks and west of the river. I'd be more comfortable with that map.
I'm sorry, point of order, can we, we have an amendment.
I'm going to ask that question exactly. Is this a motion to amend the amended motion, or is this a, do you want it as a stand, separate standalone?
No, no, can he, can he remove his motion?
Yeah, can I, can I withdraw?
Can't, yep, it has to be, yeah, you have to do it. Do you want to?
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
The one you just stated?
No.
His amendment.
Make a new one.
The original motion to amend, you want withdrawn?
Yes, and then I would like to make a new motion.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry, I don't mean to step on you, but can we, I would just love to have a discussion about what's in front of us and hear from Chief Pastorelli.
The motion to withdraw requires a second?
Gotcha, a second to withdraw.
Alderman Burkhardt requires a second?
Can she do that, that's his point.
Right, it's withdrawn.
Yes.
Yep, there's no.
Brad has the floor, I'm sorry, I just.
That's okay.
I, this just, because this is something Alderman Bruno and I've been dealing with, with Mr. Simon, I just think this is a complex discussion, and I, if we could hear from Chief Pastorelli, I think it would help all of us to like, get the, lay the land of what, what's before us, how different it is from what is, and I have the exact same concerns you do about the map, so.
No, hold on, Alderman Swanson was promised the next opportunity unless, okay, Alderman Swanson, then Maladra.
Thank you. I think we're complicating it because we're looking at specific sites in the map. And we have a site already at South Street and Third Street, which has dense residential. So that, that would be included, so that depends on if you cut it off at the train tracks or if you cut it off at South Street. I guess what I'm hearing tonight is that we really need to look at this in depth soon. And this amendment to the ordinance is necessary now, but we need to quickly move forward with changes. So I, I support leaving the map as is. It's taking care of the immediate issue at hand, and then we review the parking in the next year. So that, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra?
Yeah, I was going to say the exact same thing. Stephanie started out by saying we need to have a policy discussion about parking. It's a giant Jenga tower, in large part because we do small, little incremental fixes to meet the immediate demand, and we haven't stepped back to look at things from a holistic perspective. That holistic perspective does include what's going to happen at the Mill Ray's development. It includes future things as well as current things. So I agree with Alderman Swanson and Alderman Bruno that the map as, as it is proposed currently meets the immediate demand, and we need to move quickly and have this policy discussion and make some better sense out of the parking mess that's there currently.
Alderman Burkhardt?
I guess, is it really a mess? You know, I mean, I guess, I think we have a unique problem with Mr. Simon, who's had these rentals forever. You know, maybe it is more, I mean, I know we always have issues with employees and obviously restaurant, diners and shoppers, and if we want more high-density downtown. Again, I'm worried about making any major decision right now when we're in the middle of a pandemic that's changed how, you know, people certainly work and commute. Could we, could we get Chief Pastorelli, would Chief Pastorelli be able to come up and talk to us about, again, how this, I think what I'm really struggling with is how does this differ, this map that's in front of us, from what we have today? And I know today we do have that table, and it's street by street.
Right.
And we're talking about a few different things. We have overnight.
Correct.
Parking, we have parking that allows you to go beyond your, you know, your limited hours. I mean, I live right outside this map where we're dealing with the more high school.
Sure.
Restrictions, so.
Yeah, well, we have two permit programs that the city offers and that are administered by the police department. So we have the downtown residential permit, which allows for those residents in those areas to park overnight. So there are several streets in that area where parking is prohibited from 2:00 AM to 8:30 AM. So that residential permit allows residents to park in that area. The other permit program, as Alderman Burkhardt was talking about, is the high school permit program. And that encompasses a much bigger area, and that allows the residents in those areas to park outside of the time limit. So 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM, as long as they have their hangtag permit, they can park on the street in front of their home. There is no permit program that addresses where Mr. Simon's apartment is currently. That's all three-hour parking. So there is no permit program that allows, as of right now, people to park irrespective of that three-hour time limit. So I think that's what we're trying to address here, is to find a way to do that. But right now, there is no program that exists to do that.
So the downtown residential permit that's really dealing with overnight, if I live on Fifth Street, Fourth Street, James, Fourth and James, A., and I have four teenagers, and we can't fit them all in the driveway, and they park on the street, they could get ticketed if they're there beyond the three hours for.
Or after 2:00 AM. If they're in that residential area, west of Fourth Street, they would need a permit if they're parked there overnight. Right.
But that doesn't, but it's not a time limit of, they could park, they're not, if they stay there six hours straight, it's the time limit, it's not. So the issue with Mr. Simon's property is because it has a Third Street address, is that, I mean, or any rental, if we want to talk in general, any rental unit, any rental residential unit on Third Street just doesn't fit into that, number one.
Right, does not fit into that permit, and all of those parking spots are currently marked as three-hour parking. So anytime now that we are dedicating those to residents in that area, it's taking away those three-hour parking spots. The delicate balance, the Jenga that Alderman Maladra was talking about, by having residents who now can park irrespective of the time limit, taking up those parking spots while trying to balance, and I know it's a little different right now with COVID and the commuters, but the commuters, the shoppers, those coming to use the restaurants, and those residing there for those residents' cars who can now stay there for, in, you know, endless period of time.
And of course, we're not talking about, even this before us would allow them to park overnight on Third Street. Third Street's still off-limits, but it would allow them to park on a Fulton Franklin, those side streets.
Correct.
How, so does this map, the map before us, does that expand? You know, the number one, the downtown residential permit program by much?
Substantially. I mean, right now, it would all be west of Fourth Street. That, between Fourth and Seventh is the only place that really exists. And some down on South Street and Second Street when you get back towards the river again. But nothing covers this area of Third Street and the downtown shopping district where that three-hour time parking exists currently.
So this really expands, you said, really, the east side of somewhat? I mean, this.
Correct.
Okay. And then going down to the Duke and Lee's property, or what, you know, what do we want to call across the tracks? And then to the, what, like the Mill Ray's site, what's, is that under any kind of parking restrictions right now?
No, not right now, it's not.
So can people, could people?
Well, it's, I mean, it's, yeah, it's on 25s, and there's the city lot right across, but otherwise, there's no immediate parking right in that area.
Do you think this works, what's before us tonight? Or are you worried that if we, like, let the genie out of the box, it's going to be hard to box genie out of the bottle? To get, get it back in if we, I mean, it's all well and good to say we'll have a policy discussion in a year, but I'm, I'm worried about voting for a map like this. And in a year, some people have made decisions or, you know, choices, and then say, we're dealing with a situation where they say, you're, now you're taking away parking from me again.
Right, I mean, if you're asking my opinion, I think it does potentially open Pandora's box to an extent that, you know, there, I think there are other apartments that exist in that area that right now don't have a permit either, that if this were to be enacted, they, I'm sure they would be applying for them as well. And that starts interfering or challenging the demand for parking for other things. And then, like you said, how do you take it away once you give it? And what is the alternative? Because I think we're in an area that's definitely challenging, so.
So in a best-case scenario, somebody who has rental apartments provides off-street parking for them, right? And we do, I'm sure we do have some apartments where they do have a spot, either in the alley or a garage or something, right? Is there anything else you want to say about this?
I do want to note though, I did mention this, and I don't know that it was clear. We, just in, I think David can, can speak to this, but just in last week, we got two phone calls or from others who are in similarly situated situations. So what we were trying to do is to be able, if we're going to accommodate one, we need to accommodate all. So.
And I do understand that. I'm, like I said, I'm just worried about something that's so big and trying to bring it back in, so. All right, thank, thank you, that helped me.
Alderman Kaven?
Yeah, I guess this is, I understand what you're saying and what your concern is, and I guess I have some of the same, if this is so expansive. But obviously, we were trying to address an individual situation, and it sounds like there are probably other ones as well. Could we have this, could we schedule this larger policy discussion for sometime soon? In, in current state, just slide the line over one more street to Third Street to address the situation that we have before us, and then actually have that larger policy discussion and come up with something more comprehensive to try to?
The floor is still yours, I just wanted to clarify before.
No, I just, I'm looking for somebody else's input. I'm trying to see how we can get this part taken care of. Obviously, we need to have a more, a more detailed discussion, but is there some way to try to at least do that this evening, or would people?
The city attorney has advised me that there is a risk of our decision tonight for one particular property owner to be construed as.
Okay.
Spot zoning, if you will. And I think there's a cautionary tale in doing so.
Okay.
Floor is still yours, sir.
I don't think I have anything else other to any other comments right now. Thank you.
Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. I wish that the map were a little bit smaller as far as expanding the downtown residential permit area, parking area. And I am concerned that by including the properties of the Mill Ray's site and the Duke and Lee's site, that it's going to be a lot harder, as was just mentioned, to, to shrink. to shrink the parking map down if we, you know, have a special meeting about this and then decide, oh, wait, we shouldn't have included those areas. So I would like to know, what is the earliest date that we could have a special meeting about this downtown residential permit area?
So, if I may, again, in reading the ordinance and trying to go through section by section and all the various restrictions that are there, it's more than just a residential parking topic. It's a topic about, we have streets that are identified as three-hour parking in the code, but maybe on the street are identified as four hours, or they may be identified in the code as three, four, and nine-hour parking, and they're signed as something different. So I, it is a, I talked with the chief earlier, I think it would be later than we would like, because if we're gonna do it, we should do it right, and we should try to get all of that information. So again, tonight, if we want to shrink these boundaries, I don't, staff tried to simplify it. If you wanna, if you wanna say from the railroad tracks to State Street and, I don't know, Fourth to First excluding Third Street, that's fine. I mean, again, we needed, we needed a jumping-off point. We did not have a jumping-off point other than one particular address. And again, that didn't seem right, so this is our jumping-off point. I think part of it is, is that we are trying to do this from the dais as opposed to coming to the cow and then to a council where we could bring back, which we can still do, but bring back a revised map so people can see it. So I would say within the next year, I talked with chief, as it being a department goal for the next year, to be able to do a comprehensive review of all of the downtown parking. That's all, sorry, a long answer for how quickly.
A couple more things. So what is, what was the reason that staff included any land east of the Fox River in the boundary?
I took a map that already existed in the city's code and referred to it for simplicity.
Oh, so...
It was literally for simplicity's sake. Here's a map that we already have that references parking. Let's apply it here.
Okay, so there really isn't any specific need to include the Mill Race site, because, again, I just would rather not have the Mill Race site or the Duke and Lee's property in the map, because just thinking back on my days, like, living by Ridley Field, what people will do, like, remember from the Mill Race site, those units will have less than two parking spots per unit, and so that's assuming that each unit, let's say it's a married couple, that they're only gonna have one car or less, and I find that kind of unrealistic. And I know this discussion is for another day perhaps, but I want to point out that when people in the Mill Race property, once that's developed, if it's, if and when it's developed, have company over, what they're gonna do is, if they're included in the downtown residential permit area, the residents are gonna move their cars to the street to allow their company to park in their garage spaces. So, and the same thing with the Duke and Lee's property, I could just, I anticipate that that would happen. Of course, I'm no expert, but that's how I lived my life for many years. So I just feel that having those higher-density housing areas where you have residences included in this downtown parking, it's just gonna make things very difficult. Like, people are gonna have a harder time finding a parking spot, who just want to come to Cheneva to shop and dine and all that, so I just feel better not putting the Mill Race site or the Duke and Lee's in this map. Otherwise, I would be happy to vote on it tonight. So I don't know if I should make a motion, if that would be appropriate.
You're certainly welcome to.
Okay, well, then I guess I would like to make a motion that we take out anything east of the Fox River and also the Duke and Lee's property. So I guess anything, but I can't remember, is Duke and Lee's north or south of the tracks?
South.
Okay, so anything south of the tracks, as was suggested by a few people already, and then anything east of the Fox River, I would like to exclude from the boundaries.
The motion to...
And that's my, yeah.
Forgive me.
Oh, sorry, that's my motion.
The motion to amend, as stated by Alderman McGowan, requires a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kostarog. On the floor now is the discussion of the amendment, that is to eliminate references on the subject map of any property east of the Fox River and any property south of the railroad tracks. Anyone wish to address that amendment? Alderman Burkhardt?
Another question for Chief Passerelli. So I'm looking at this map, if we cut out these two portions. So if I have a rental on Second Street and Hamilton right now, or First Street and, you know, State, if I'm living above, you know, one of the places on, I can't get a residential parking permit right now.
Not right now, no.
Not currently, but if this is approved, you would be able to.
Correct.
And this would allow, this calls, though, to allow those people to park basically on their block? I mean, is that the language? It says something on there?
Yeah, I think on the street that they reside.
On the street they reside.
Yeah, within that block.
Sounds like My Fair Lady is on the street where you live.
But I think, you know, as long as they're within, you know, if they're north of Hamilton and they live on Franklin, obviously, I think there would be an issue, but if they can't find a spot within their one block, but they're two blocks over, I don't think.
Nor do we have the manpower to be trailing.
Correct.
That too.
See where they are, right. So what is your wor, why am I the one that's so worried about this, and I brought this to us? But I mean, I just, I know it's a delicate balance, and I shouldn't have been flipped, saying, is it a problem? Because I know it's a, it is a delicate balancing act, and people don't think about parking here like they do in the city, where when you live in the city, you're, you know, fine, if you park six or eight blocks away, you feel like you're lucky, you know. Here, people will go around the block to find a spot. Does this still, does that still worry you, cutting off these two pieces? I mean, that's still opening up a lot of...
It is. I think it'll be a challenge. You know, there's aspects of it from, you know, where the CSOs now, when they do their marking for enforcement, when we're actually in normal times, you know, they can simply check the cars. This will be a little more challenging to look for the permit, make sure the permit's where it's supposed to be, so that those people aren't getting marked for a time violation. And again, I do have concerns about the amount of parking. I mean, it's one of the most common complaints or concerns that we get addressed at the police department, that people can't find parking, that we have, you know, business owners who want reserved parking, we have those kinds of things that we're always trying to balance. I think when things get back to normal, I know the one day that we walked out and Franklin Street was very full, Third Street was packed, and that was a great sign and a good thing to see. So that could get challenging when you have 15, 20 cars that just don't have to move for the timing. You know, when we get back into special event season, that can make things a little bit of a challenge as well, trying to get some of those cars moved for some of those events that occur, Third Street and State Street and that kind of thing. So there's definite challenges.
If something like this passes, then, I mean, it does say it's on a year-to-year basis, so, I mean, if we decided to constrict the map, I mean, people would be under the new, is there an issue with people arguing, like, well, I had it last year?
But I think that's why you go through a process, and you have, you have public comment, you provide notice to those that have residential passes or own property of what's going on so they can provide input throughout that process. I mean, I think you risk that challenge anytime you change an ordinance about anything. You know, there's always something, but that's why you have public notice requirements and those types of things. So I would say, you know, again, regardless of what you all decide this evening, we will still be working on a comprehensive review. That, these are not exclusive of one another. I mean, that's already been, we've already talked about it, because with the strategic plan, looking to change some of the commercial second floors to other uses, we need to, we need to look, we've had that on our list, to look at parking anyhow. So that's, that, your decision tonight doesn't affect that decision. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Do you worry, Stephanie, though, that our decision tonight, if we did approve even this constricted map, that that somehow ties our hands if, I mean, or is that...
No, I just, what I worry is when we make decisions not having the full picture of unintended consequences. That's the only thing, and I don't know what those are, because they're unintended. So.
I get it. We just, you know, we do have, you know, a property owner here who, I feel like is a unique, is a somewhat unique situation.
And again, and I'm not trying to, but the other property owner is at, what, on Franklin? Right across the street. So just because that property owner hasn't talked to you and Mike, they have talked to David, and we were working, they were asking for dedicated spaces in a parking lot, which is different, but this would address, they would be eligible then for this as well. So, you know, it's like, there's a lot of people, and I don't know, the police chief may have had other people calling him, so it's, you know, different people call different people, so it's trying to get all that information together.
I get it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno, this is on the amendment, ladies and gentlemen.
There was my question. This is just on the amendment, so I'll reserve my comments when we return to the main motion.
Very well. Anyone else on the amendment? Seeing no requests to speak? On the amendment, ladies and gentlemen, a simple majority, and the amendment would be adopted into the main motion. With that, Deputy Clerk Dawkins, please take the role.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kostarog?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye, Marks aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
The amendment has been adopted with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero absent. We are back to the main motion as amended, ladies and gentlemen. Alderman Bruno, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. All the points are absolutely valid in terms of whether it's a can of worms, additional challenges for enforcement. I would, I suppose, if I misstate something, Director DeGroot can come up and correct me, but we have a certain quantity of upstairs residential in the prescribed area at present. Not a lot. I don't think we're gonna see a flood. Most properties have their driveways and garages. Any new residential conversions will be up to, that's a change of use, we will be requiring that they either provide off-street parking or do fee in lieu of. I don't think we're going to see this flood onto our streets that will really put us behind the eight ball. But I think we'll, you know, we'll have to keep an eye on it, and again, hopefully, we'll have had that discussion, really buttoned it down by then. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on the main motion as amended? Alderman Marks?
Stephanie, just a question for you. What happens during the snowfall? Do those cars have to come off the street then, or do they still get to stay?
No, the regulations would be like any other street. After, what, two inches of snow, they would have to be removed from the street until such time as the street is cleared.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the main motion as amended?
Just gonna follow up to Marks, and for special events, you mentioned that, are these cars required to leave for that, or no?
The only time they would be required to leave is if they're, we're closing down a street for something, then in which case, we sign it the night before, and they would have to leave.
Thank you.
Alderman Burkhardt?
Can I make another motion to amend?
Certainly.
I'd like to make a motion to amend to cut off the portion of this map west of Fourth Street, so that Fourth Street would be the westernmost boundary, believing that if we're talking downtown, you know, that feels like a pretty natural westernmost boundary. It also, again, doesn't, it gives us some time to really talk about this issue and look at how, I mean, this includes the Citron property, you know, I mean, it would give us some, a little bit of space to, before we, again, take a huge cut of the pie, I just feel more comfortable constricting the map and then make changes in a year when we have a comprehensive discussion. As Alderman Bruno said, a lot of those rentals there are second-floor units that have driveways and garages. I don't see that we need to give much relief in that area for people who, you know, why open it up to tons of street parking? So that would be my amendment.
Alderman Burkhardt, west of Fourth Street?
Yes.
North and south of Route 38? Or the whole?
From the, just line along Fourth Street there to go through the courthouse and to line up with the line at the bottom.
Okay, got it.
That's real technical, right?
That's the urban planning, that's the, there's been a motion to amend, as stated, seconded by Alderman Kostarog. Discussion on the amendment. Alderman Swanson, forgive me.
That's okay, thank you, Mayor. Isn't that a change from what is currently in place now? We go from Fourth to Seventh?
So there's, that's a different section of the code.
Okay.
So that overnight parking, and again, I think what we discovered is that the residential parking was codified in an ordinance but not codified in the code book. So when I go back to the ordinance, the residential permit for those that are west of Fourth would be the overnight only. It would not exempt them from timed-limit parking. This map would exempt from everything other than disabled, crosswalks, no parking, alleys, driveways, but it would exempt them from the timed limit.
Okay, thank you.
That's, I think that goes back to Craig's Jenga, and I'm gonna have to draw a pretty map and color-code it and give it to our CSOs.
Anyone else on the amendment? Seeing none? Simple majority, the amendment will be adopted into the main motion. Miss Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Kostarog?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
The amendment passes with nine affirmative votes, one nay vote, zero absent. We are back to the main motion as amended.
And amended.
Excuse me, amended twice, forgive me. That includes, of course, eliminating property east of the river, eliminating property south of the tracks, and eliminating property west of Fourth Street.
Very good.
All the way to Algonquin. The main motion as amended. Any questions, comments, clarifications needed? Seeing none, hearing none?
I had to clear.
Yes, sir.
How do you deal with Fourth Street through the courthouse?
I mean, you just draw a line through there, but there's no parking there, so it won't...
So the courthouse would be divided, then?
Yeah, because there's no residential street that goes through there, so it really doesn't have...
I didn't know if it would circumvent using James to Fifth and then Campbell back east to...
I was just gonna draw the line unless we go back to using words.
It's not a big deal, I just wondered, because that wasn't defined, because Fourth Street is not a through street through the courthouse, or is it?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Well, and to Alderman Kilburg's point, that's why I referenced, it's to Route 38 and beyond.
And beyond, yes.
Okay, because there are some, there are some residential units on Fourth and James.
Yeah.
So, okay. Anyone else to the main motion as amended twice? Simple majority, and this motion amended twice will be adopted. Miss Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kostarog?
Aye.
The main motion as amended twice has been approved with 10 affirmative votes. The main motion as amended twice has been approved, with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent, ladies and gentlemen, unless I'm mistaken, that concludes our meeting tonight, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Motion by Alderman Kaven to adjourn, or, voice, excuse me, a roll call vote would be in order, Deputy Clerk Dawkins, please take the roll.
Marx?
Marx aye.
McGowan?
McGowan aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Microphone?
There you go.
Let the record show that all are still in attendance, from the, uh, council meeting, uh, any new business or, uh, public comment to, uh, come before the committee, if not, uh, item three recommends suspending the rules to permit myself to be the chairman, or the committee of the whole chair, for this meeting, and to vote on all action items on this agenda, is there a motion?
So moves.
Move my Maladra, seconded by Swanson, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Oh.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, a roll call?
Yep, we should.
Yep.
Okay, McGowan?
McGowan aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Marx aye.
Thank you.
Carries ten zero, item four, approve special committee of the home minutes from October 5th, 2020, and special committee of the home minutes from October 12th, 2020, is there a motion to approve?
No, so moves.
Moved by Bruno, seconded by Swanson, uh, roll call?
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Marx aye.
McGowan?
McGowan aye.
Carries ten oh, item five, items of business, item A, consider draft resolution authorizing declaration of fire department surplus property.
Need a motion first.
Moved by, uh, Maladra.
Second.
Seconded by Kaven.
Okay, thank you, so this is a request to declare various fire department equipment that is obsolete at the end of life, or otherwise unusable as surplus, uh, the items to be declared surplus were identified in the agenda packet, and once declared, the surplus property will be sold, or otherwise appropriately disposed of, and joining us virtually is Chief Antonori, if there's any additional questions.
Seeing I take, we're prepared to vote, would you please read the roll?
Bruno?
Bruno aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kossarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Marx aye.
McGowan?
McGowan aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Carries ten oh, item five B, recommend approval of, uh, certificate of acceptance for Lincoln Square subdivision improvements, is there a motion to approve?
Approved.
Moved by, uh, Kossarog?
Second.
Seconded by Kaven.
Okay, so this certificate of acceptance is for the public sidewalks, parkway restorations, parkway trees, um, pavement markings, et cetera, to accommodate the Lincoln Square subdivision on Brisha Road, public work staff has recently confirmed that all of the punch list items associated with this development have been satisfactorily completed, and with this COA, the corresponding financial sureties supplied by the developer of Lincoln Square will be released, uh, and we do have the ever-patient Assistant Public Works Director, Brian Schieber, who can answer any additional questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? Doesn't appear, uh, do-